Five dash oh four thirty nine Summer Avenue. Um, and so we have a email from the applicant requesting that their uh applications continue to the next meeting. Um, so I get a motion to accept the continuance.
Awesome.
Okay. All right, come on there. Good, all right, see you then next time hopefully. All right, so then we move on to case number twenty five dash eleven ninety four Oak Street. The zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing in the select board meeting room at Town Hall sixteen Mill Street, Reading, Massachusetts. On Tuesday, September second, twenty twenty five, seven P M. Application of Nancy Toomey on behalf of the homeowner. Pursuant to match general law chapter forty eight, section nine for a special permit under reading zoning bylaws. Section six dot three, seven oh oh, seven oh three, seven oh three dot two. To demolish the existing garage and build a new two car garage living space on existing nonconforming structure. The nonconforming side yard setback on a property located ninety four Oak Street. Assessor's map ten, law twenty six in Reading, Massachusetts. Unless there's an exception, an objection, I'll dispense with the reading of the butters list, except to say that the butters were notified as with the following. Select board, the town clerk, the police department, fire department, building department, conservation commission, health department, assessor's office, insurance division, C P D C. And the members and associate members of the board of appeals, as well as the planning boards of Wakefield, Lynnfield, North Reading, Stonem, Woburn, and Wilmington. Testimony given before this board is taken under oath, so if you think you may want to speak, please stand and raise your right hand. If anyone wants to speak on this case, we just stand up to be great. Uh, and so I swear the testimony given by me before this board will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth. My response is just I do.
I do.
Great, thank you. Uh, yeah, so I want to represent the case, that'd be great.
Amanda, could you put that meeting idea up? It said stop sharing. Share, I'm sorry.
Of course Kevin made that look really.
We had it all well oiled and then it's.
Not it.
Sorry.
No, you're fine. He clicked the button I just clicked and it showed me.
Did he say it was a shield or something like that, was that?
Yeah.
I don't think there's a meeting idea anywhere else.
So you think you can go if you go to join dot zoom?
I do, I'm there, I just need the meeting idea and then the.
Oh, so it's eight, three, eight, zero, nine, seven, seven, two, eight, eight, one?
Great. And then I'll leave the code just a second.
Two, two, zero, five, four, six, five.
Six five, all right. Turn this on. All right, well, it says it's not the correct password.
Sorry, I think I found the correct spot.
Oh, there it is.
Sorry.
Okay, there you go. Two oh five, four, six, five. All right, let's try that. Two. Four, six. One more time. It's not saying it's the correct password. All right, let's go back to the beginning, maybe I didn't do this right. I'm so sorry. Try again. All right. Zoom. Dot share. U S. Thought it was easier to get the drawings up if I can. Well, we might just have to.
Share.
Share dot zoom.
Yeah, share.
Okay, thank you. Share. Dot U S. There's a bunch of them together.
There's a bunch of them together.
Yeah, this is the one I was using. And then it is eight, three, eight.
Zero, nine, seven, seven?
Zero, nine, seven, seven.
Two, eight, eight, one.
All right. Wow. And the meeting passcode, two oh five.
Four, six.
Four, six, oop. Six five. Yay, yay, we got it, thank you very much. I love it when it works. Uh, okay, let us do this. Let me share desktop. And then I want to go to the drawings. All right, we can see this, that's great. All right, thank you very much, hold on, let me go ahead and go. So I want to create a line that. Get these together. So this is, uh, first of all, I'm Nancy Toomey, the architect. Thank you for bailing me on this. Um, I'm here representing Leslie and David McIsaac, who own ninety four Oak Street. Uh, they purchased the property in two thousand eighteen. Um, it's, the house itself was built in nineteen thirty four, it's on a corner lot, you can see this is the, the um. Uh, actual site plan. Uh, the red is the main house, the blue is proposed. Um, the lot is nonconforming, the frontage is just barely nonconforming. And the existing side setback where the garage is, is currently eight point nine feet. Um, what we're proposing will be nine point two feet from the setback. Um, what we're hoping to do, if a special permit is granted, is to remove the single story um garage. Let me show you the plans. So currently, this is their current garage. There's a breezeway here and an extended kitchen. So the intent is to remove this garage, add a new garage towards the front, still within the twenty feet. To gain two cars, an extended kitchen, and a better mudroom. And at the same time, we're going to remove the back part of the garage, so that it will be extended straight and then towards the front. Um, just to give you a sense, it's all slap on grade, crawl space, and then on the second floor, this will be a second floor addition. We will be extending out over the garage with a new bedroom and bathroom. Uh, this house was built originally back in nineteen thirty four um as two bedrooms on the second floor. And at some point, somebody put this wall in to make it into a smaller third bedroom. It, it's really very tight bedrooms on both cases, so hopefully the intent is eventually to remove this. But at this point, there's three bedrooms on the second floor. To give you a sense of what we're doing, we are adding at the same angle as the existing garage. We'll extend it, the existing garage right now ends right here. We're extending it forward to gain that two s- uh, two car garage. And then we're extending the kitchen out with a half bath and a mudroom off of the garage. To gain the space that they need for not only the kitchen, but to get the two cars in there. Um, the intent of this, just to give you a second floor version, hallway, laundry, new bathroom, new primary bedroom over the front. Our intent for this is to keep the same scale and uh feeling of the existing house. It's hard when it's not an angle to kind of see the whole thing at once. But we're leaving the roofline at the same height, we're angling the roofs back and away from the side to minimize. Um, the imposure of this on the neighbors. We have a, this is the full height as the existing house and a rear dormer. And we're holding the dormer back away from that side again to minimize the amount of space that's going up. So the existing garage is probably somewhere in here, and we're just raising it to be at the same height as the existing house. And extending this um back dormer all the way across. Um, there's a couple more elevations, just to give you a sense, that's the back, looking at it from the corner with the neighbors. So the neighbor's side is here, pulling things back, roof goes away. Um, so the two story part of it really is just over the existing garage area. And again, as I said, pulling back from the rear uh to minimize that from the backyard and to gain more space. Um, we designed this to really help make it feel as if it's part of. So it's originally a Royal Barry Wills cape. I don't know if anybody knows who's, who Royal Barry Wills is, but he was a very prolific architect of uh cape style homes, not only in Reading, but Wakefield and Stonem in quite a ways. This is a, a original one, and so the intent is to try and keep the scale, the feel of it, the look of it. So that it looks as if it really hasn't, it, it wasn't designed to be different, it was designed to fit. Um, let's see, the existing garage is a couple of ideas of why we're doing this. The existing garage, as is true of, of garages in those days, is not big enough to fit a normal car. I don't know, I, I, a side story, I asked my mother who was in those days, I said, how can it fit? Those cars were huge, and she said they were very narrow. So these garages don't fit our cars. So uh, the intent is to try and get a garage that works. Um, David, the owner, has back issues, so in the winter, this face is north and the driveway gets extremely icy. Um, so to be able to pull in and get in and out of that cars is really imperative for him during the winter. Um, and then again, on the second floor, we're trying to gain that extra space so that we have three normal sized bedrooms. Um, so that going forward, um, the beds fit, kids fit, et cetera. Um, I think that we've done a really good job of getting this to fit the neighborhood. Uh, hopefully you've been around the neighborhood to see it, uh, but most of those lots in that area are very small. That was the time it was done before we had our zoning bylaws. Um, I do have a couple of pictures I wanted to show you of the existing house. This is that back with the existing dormer, and we're taking this roof and extending it over, just to give you a sense. Um, this is that single car garage, it does come back pretty low towards the back. We'll be making sure that everything is back at the same height and level as the existing house. Um, and then this is the front with that single story garage with the little mudroom and entry. And then this is more of the front. And then if I can, I wanted to give you a sense of scale, so of the neighbors and how we fit in. This back half of the house will be gone. So I think that's an important thing to keep in mind. This is what it looks like between this neighbor and our uh proposed property. This is a very big, tall house. Um, and then going to the front, this is sort of a juxtaposition of the two houses. The peak of this would not be any higher than what you're seeing here. So I appreciate your patience and time and happy to answer any questions you may have.
Good, thank you. Uh, yeah, questions from anyone on the board?
I guess just, uh, just clarifying, it is currently, the current nonconforming building is currently sitting, I believe you said eight point nine?
Eight point nine feet from the side yard.
From the side, so that, so it's already imposing upon that side, so you're actually making it.
A little bit better by a few inches.
A little bit better by, 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 by a couple inches there.
And I should add that uh they have received over thirty three letters, I think, and counting. Of people in the neighborhood and surrounding neighborhood who, who are in support. Uh, across the street, uh, behind them, uh, on the other side of the street, and they did a great job of taking the drawings around and talking to people. So hopefully you've seen those letters, but they're, they're pretty good. And I think um, uh Bradley, that my favorite attorney in town, what a fabulous letter, I, I really loved it. But anyway, uh, just wanted to make sure that you knew that.
And obviously there's no extension in terms of the height or anything like that, as you mentioned, so.
No.
I, yeah, I'm pretty comfortable.
Trying to keep the peaks similar to the other peaks on the rest of the houses though, so.
What else?
When it comes to the garage, um, so the proposed garage you're showing, it has some existing driveway on the side there. Are you planning to keep the, the drive, the existing strip of driveway there? You gonna make that grass or landscaping something different?
I don't think there's a driveway on the side, let me go to the um proposed. Oh, I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
Right, this is wider than the, the house itself. Are you think, I don't think there's enough room in there to put a car, it's only eight point, or nine point three feet. Cars are typically six feet or so, so um are you thinking you'll be landscaping in there? You probably haven't gotten to that point.
But we like landscaping.
Yeah. I, I don't believe they could fit a car in there easily. Um, the fence is actually not on the property line, as you can see at the back, it's off a little bit, but there is no fence at that location, so um. Conceivably, they could squeeze something in there, but I'm not sure.
Mostly out of curiosity, if you were going to be returning it to a permeable surface or not, so.
Yeah, probably permeable, yeah, I think if, if anything, the, the two, you know, this driveway will probably widen itself out to be the twenty feet at the front. Uh, where the driveway meets the street. And then there is a door on the side, so the intent is there'll be a walkway this way to get in. And most likely, they'll make access to the fence back here, but I, I'm not sure. They'll have to move that fence a little bit further forward, since we're taking out the back half of that garage, our back quarter of that garage. Tiny garage.
Yeah, for me, it looks like a pre-reasonable addition to me, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I am, I mean, you're not increasing the nonconformity at all, in fact, you're very slightly decreasing it. Um, and um, and I appreciate the effort you've made to make it fit in and, and um. Um, your, your photos and your, your uh presentation clarified it for me, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right, great, um, so let's go ahead and open up the public comment. Um, before we do that, though, I do want to note that we do have the letters that Nancy mentioned. Um, so we have one individual letter and then one, there's a letter that a bunch of people will sign and introduce it to. I forget actually which ones. Oh yeah, I think these two go together, so these are.
Yeah, and I have another one here that's stuck in that I should hopefully give you as well that came late. I mean, let me add this to the.
Yeah.
One more.
Okay, thank you.
Should I still say it's share or is?
Um, you guys will leave it up for the time being. Uh, yeah, anyone else choose a person want to comment? Sure, go ahead. And if you just say your name for the record, and yeah, you know, yeah, go up there so they can hear you on this.
Yeah.
Hi, my name's Kevin Mullins. Um, I own the property at one hundred Oak Street, The Yellow House, with my partner, Barack Alcoque. Um, I'll just start off saying I appreciate the efforts by Mary, the house looks beautiful, the designs. And this pains me to have to be the one person that has, woman I, some uh issues. But um. We were presented with the plans, everything seemed great, I was all on board. The past week or so, I've been kind of looking, tweaking my thoughts. And uh, one of the things that we have issue with is um. On that side of our house, we're going to be looking at a wall and a roof. Because it is going to extend out approximately twenty two, twenty three feet, three feet forward from the existing garage. So it's going to block, I mean, we're going to be out of our kitchen window, we're going to be looking at the side of a house or a roof. It's going to block a view from that side of our house to Oak Street. Um, it is lovely, the design, I, I'm, I'm completely, you know, it's well, well done, but. If you saw those pictures, which you did, it's very tight on that side. I, I realized that, you know, it's nine, nine point two feet from the existing property line. But it kind of boxes us in on that side. On the other side of our property, we have a very large yard. But on the other side of the property, there's ample distance, and I, you know, realize our house was built in nineteen twenty, it's been in my family for seventy five years. But um, that's really the only grievance we have right now. I, we don't want to be the only people to hold it up, but if we didn't speak up. I, you know, however the cards lie, but um, I, I don't know if the plan can be modified at all. I know they went too great expensive to get the plans. I don't know, they can move it towards the back of the yard ten feet and shorten up the front entrance of the garage by ten feet as a, as a compromise. I, I don't know if that's possible, I'm not an architect. Uh, I am in construction, I do know a few things, but um, I'm not a designer, I'm not an architect, so. Um, that's our biggest concern, is looking out that side of our house. We're going to see a, a wall and a roof for more than twenty, twenty two feet from what's existing, so. Uh, we have to come and, and, and voice our opinion. And I feel terrible, I, I don't want to dash anyone's dreams, or, you know, it's, it's, it makes sense to them. I wish the houses were a little bit further apart and I wouldn't have an opinion about this, one way or the other.
Sir, can I ask you a question?
Sure, thanks.
Sorry, um, so if I'm understanding you correctly, you're, you're not necessarily concerned about how far it is from your side lot. But you're concerned about how far it's extending towards the front, which is further than it extends now.
Yeah, the existing garage has been there forever. And it's a small garage, for sure, but, you know, it's there and we're used to it. And it doesn't, you know, impede any views to the street or the neighborhood on that side. The extension is going to be, again, plus or minus twenty something feet. And. The, and it, you know, they're gonna, I don't care about the back, it's gonna, they're gonna take off, let's say, six or eight feet off the back to square it off, which makes sense architecturally. I don't necessarily have a problem going towards the back of the yard, because it's all driveway on my side in our garage. So like, I, I'm not interested in looking into their backyard, I'm not interested in looking into their house. And I'm sure they're not interested in looking into our house. So that's, that's what it is.
Can I share a drawing? I did download the map, the G I S maps, to kind of show what the juxtaposition between the two buildings is, just so you can see.
Right.
So it's about twenty one feet from this shutout. So we're going forward and actually cutting off that back portion, just so you have that as a, as a visual as well.
All right, is it going forward, can you indicate how far forward it's going in relation?
Sure.
To say the driveway or maybe to, to that line?
Yes, so if we, if we, if we look, yeah, that's a good point. Let me look at the um plans again, hold on. Um, if we go back to, yeah, to here.
I know, twelve feet, but it's seeing.
And actually, if we look at, no, the worst part is to go here. So um, it's twelve feet back and um. And if this is twenty four, it is probably about twenty feet forward, but we're taking off that, that back car. So if we look at this G I S map, just to kind of get a sense, if I can. Um, we are twelve feet here and then going back this way, so it straightens out, right? So it's probably, uh, it's, I would think this driveway is a little bit different than what the other one is. But I bet it's probably somewhere in here.
Okay.
Would be my guess.
Okay.
And I think this is, is that a porch?
I believe that's a porch for them.
So their, their windows, again, I, I'm trying to get a sense myself of what the scale is of that. If we go back to the pictures. Um, that will just give you, this is the porch, that's twenty feet or twenty one feet from the property line. So going forward, we're affecting the porch. This gets affected, and let's look at um the side, if we can, let me see if I put those back. Did I do the rear, here we go. So this, if we go back, will impact more here than we would towards the front. So I, I, we, when we looked at this, we deliberately chose that we were trying to keep this away from them. So the roof lines of where we have towards the front are actually lower, because we're going up like we would with a cape. The, the peak is right where that garage is currently. So just to give you a sense, if we go back, we'd need to have that room on the second floor. So that will be a full wall going back, which would impact them, I would think, more than it would be going forward, where we can tuck things under the eaves. So from an architectural standpoint, we thought this was the best way of mitigating some of that aspect.
Is there any other public comment, anything else people want to say? All right, thank you. Uh, yeah, I guess any other final thoughts from the board?
Nope. Um, who needs to vote on this?
Oh, because we.
Yeah, because we were one actual.
One associate member today. Number two anymore.
Neither do I. Who's are you?
We're the associate. Yeah. All right, I'll just vote on this one.
Yeah, it's not out, though. All right, sounds good. Uh. All right, yeah, I guess, I guess I would say just like the standard we have for this is to, and not be substantially more detrimental to the community. Uh, I think in this case, I don't see it as being substantially more detrimental, I think it's just a lot of fun, I just like to appreciate that. All right, sounds good. Um, so anyone want to make a motion?
I will have to make a motion if I can snag the script from somebody. Thank you. So. I moved to grant petitioner Nancy Toomey uh a special permit under sections, sorry, one second, pull this up. Sorry, oh, thank you. Great. So, under section six point three, seven point zero, seven point three, and seven point three two. Uh, to demolish the existing garage and built a, and build a new two car garage with living space on an existing nonconforming structure. Uh, with a nonconforming side yard setback as. Uh. At the address, uh, oh, as, I'm sorry, thank you. Ninety four Oak Street. Uh, present to the plans set forth by Stephen um Melsook.
Melsook.
Melsook, thank you. Uh. And otherwise entitled, uh, assessor's map ten, parcel twenty six, Reading, Massachusetts. Uh, this special permit is subject to the following conditions. Petitioner shall submit to the building inspector a certified, a certified plot, plot plan of the proposed construction. And proposed foundation plans prior to the issuance of a foundation permit for the work. The petitioner's final construction plans for the new construction shall be submitted to the building inspector. Along with the as-built foundation plans prior to the issuance of the building permit. And as-built plans showing the completed construction shall be submitted to the building inspector immediately after the work is completed. And prior to the issuance of an occupancy permit.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
All right.
All right, you guys.
Thank you very much. We really appreciate it. Thank you. I'll stop sharing now that I have to figure that out.
Appreciate it, though. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Makes it easier, doesn't it?
Thank you.
So much.
Congratulations.
Just thank you.
So let's move on to case number twenty-five dash twelve, eighteen Knollwood Road. The zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing in the select board's meeting room at Town Hall, sixteen Lowell Street, Reading, Massachusetts, on Tuesday, September second, twenty twenty-five, seven P M, on the application of Vinicius Silva on behalf of the homeowner pursuant to national law chapter forty A, section nine, for a special permit under Reading zoning bylaw, section seven dot zero, seven dot three, and seven dot three dot two, to construct a porch on an existing nonconforming structure with a nonconforming side yard setback on the property. This is an objection. I will dispense with the reading. Sorry, I think I missed half of that, so that's, that doesn't make any sense. I pulled this up.
It's a special permit application, right?
Yeah.
That's what I, I was confused about.
Sorry, I just needed the last little section of this. Um, to demolish an exi- existing, no, sorry, alright, here we go. To construct a side of the regular property located eighteen Knollwood Road, assesses map eleven, yeah. Lot eighteen, Reading, Massachusetts, something like that. Just missing a line. This is an objection. I will dispense with the reading of the butters, except to say that the butters were notified as were the following. Select board, the town clerk, the police department, the fire department, the billing department, the conservation commission, the health department, assessor's office, engineering division, CPDC, and members and associate members of board of appeals, as well as the planning boards of Wakefield, Lynnfield, North Reading, Stonem, Woburn, Wilmington, Wilmington. Testimony given by, before this board is taken under oath, so if you think you may want to speak, please stand and raise your right hand. Um, I swear the testimony given by me before this board will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing about the truth. I suppose, just I do.
I do.
Thank you. Uh, yes, we just want to give a presentation on the case?
Good evening. My name is Vinicius Silva. I'm the builder representing the homeowner at eighteen Knollwood Road. So we've been hired to uh, sorry, so we're proposing a two-part addition, a rare addition that is fully compliant with zoning. Just to clarify, we've actually gone through the conservation board and got the approval for that. We're actually, the existing structure actually encroaches on the the thirty-foot buffer and we propose to actually reduce that. And that got approv- approved. And um, the second part of the addition is we're proposing a front garage extension of just five feet. Uh, this is crucial because the current garage is too shallow to fit a standard vehicle. We're also proposing a second floor addition above the garage. The existing home is a nonconforming in terms of front setback. We are not, it's hard, in terms of the side setback, we are not increasing that nonconformity. Because we are altering an existing nonconforming su- structure, we are here tonight to respectfully request a special permit. One key factor influencing our design is the wetlands buffer at the rear of the property. It limits our ability to expand backward. In fact, we are removing a portion of the existing house that currently sits within the buffer, bringing the home more into environmental compliance. The addition is modest and the overall design is consistent with the look and the scale of other homes in the neighborhood. It will remain a single family home and will not negatively impact streetscape or density. We've also done our diligence with the neighbors, spoke directly with all immediate butters, and I'm happy to report that everyone has done this report of the project. At the end of the day, this is about giving a family the functional code respect to home while improving environmental compliance and preserving neighborhood character. Out of respect, we ask the board to approve this special permit and happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you for your time.
Um, is anyone on the board have questions or comments about this case?
I'll go. Let me, let me just clarify. So for putting aside the conservation issues, um, it it's nonconforming right now in the um, side yard setback, right?
Correct.
Is that the only nonconformity?
That is the only nonconformity.
Okay. And so what you're planning on doing will not change that, any nonconformity at all, except that it will make it a little bit smaller?
A little bit smaller?
Oh, no, I'm sorry. That'll be the same. That'll be the same. Okay, that'll remain the same. But the garage coming forward
Correct.
is the only thing that isn't on the existing footprint, right? And that will, also will not be, that that still complies with the, with the regulations even though it's coming forward, right?
Yes, correct.
Okay. So the the reason I was confused is because this application, it kind of reads like a request for a variance, but it sounds like you're really requesting a special permit.
We are requesting a special permit.
Okay.
I think that there was a little bit of confusion. I think I've even spoke with Amanda about it, uh, but it is a special permit.
Okay.
Yeah, not a variance.
That, that makes it easier.
Sorry, I'm sorry about that. The application is over.
Can confirm.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
I think it looks great. I think uh, yeah, I I don't see any particular issues. I see, obviously, it's a lot easier to get that special permit than it is a variance, so. So I think it is a circumstance where the only thing we really are looking at is whether or not this design is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. And obviously, I believe the design is beautiful and I think it will work, it will work great with the uh, with the neighborhood itself. But I'd actually like to hear just how, uh, from you guys, how you feel uh, it it is reduced, like you did mention that uh, the neighbors are all very much in in uh, in favor. And I didn't know if there was anything in particular that you felt they approved of more so on one side versus other. It was just updating the house, making it more code compliance, uh, potentially reducing some of the impact for uh, with the conservation commission issues, things like that. I didn't know if there was anything that you guys wanted to highlight specifically that you felt was more appropriate there.
Yeah, I don't think so. I think um, um, Barat Batia, he spoke mostly with the neighbors, but I think there was a general consensus. I think, you know, what we're, what we're seeking, we're proposing is not a huge asset, a second floor addition mainly over the, over the existing house. Um, the existing house, I think, has been abandoned for a little while, so some overgrown gardening around the house. So I think, I think everyone is pretty happy to have, you know, a new family move into the neighborhood, so.
Yeah.
The current, the current owner is not living in the house for almost three years. His wife passed away unfortunately, and then he moved to Florida with his daughter. So the house is basically empty for last three years. The deck is not even safe is a less word. It, if you step on the deck, it it will come apart. Right away. So yeah, we are trying to move, like with my wife, two kids, uh, you know, Joshua's school, so yeah. We will bring the house up to the community like standard so that we can live in, you know.
And you guys are planning on moving into the house?
ASAP.
Awesome.
Because my son is already going to Joshua. It's hard to pick up and drop from the current location. Yeah, we are waiting as, as soon as possible before the winter hits.
Sounds good. Uh, anything else on the board? Okay, I'll open up the public comment, but I don't think I see anybody. I know someone's got it recorded before, so it's right there, but uh, I guess let's close public comment and then, if I got the motion.
I'll, I'll do it. I think she wants that.
Oh, yeah.
Alright, I'll move to grant the petitioners um, of Vinicius Silva on behalf of um, Anita and uh, Barat Batia as trustees. Uh-oh, under sections. Under sections, for a special permit under Reading zoning bylaw, section seven point O, seven point three, and seven point three point two, uh, to conduct, to construct a porch on the existing nonconforming structure with an nonconforming side yard setback. It's actually more than a porch. I don't know. Let's put it that way. To, to um, to build the um,
Second floor addition.
The second floor addition as shown on the plans that were submitted with the application and as shown on the plot plan of land um, prepared by Sullivan Engineering Group dated July twenty-second, twenty twenty-five. This special permit is subject to the following conditions. The petitioner shall submit to the building inspector a certified plot plan of the proposed construction and proposed foundation plans prior to the issuance of a foundation permit for the work. Two, the petitioner's final construction plans for the new structure shall be submitted to the building inspector along with the as-built foundation plans prior to the issuance of a building permit. Number three, the as-built plans showing the completed construction shall be submitted to the building inspector immediately after the work is completed and prior to the issuance of an occupancy permit.
Do we want to include any additional uh restrictions that's set forth by the conservation or comply with all uh requirements set forth by the conservation commission?
Um, sure, I I don't, yeah, sure, out of excess of caution, we can, we can say this is contingent upon the representation that um, they are also working with the conservation commission and have have received the um, um, the um, instructions and the permission from them to do this. Um.
Second.
Okay. All in favor? Alright.
Thank you. Congratulations guys. Thank you.
How does that? Uh, please, next up is the August minutes, which I was not able to, so.
Neither. I have two notes, just identifying Amanda Haley instead of just you as Amanda. That's also in these minutes and the beginning. Um, Taylor addressed Amanda Haley comments from previous meeting.
Yes, so I, last video completely cut out, so I missed all that, so I wasn't exactly sure, but is it still highlighted?
Yeah. Um, yeah, I can send you my statement if you wanted to read it.
Yeah, if you don't mind getting that, that'd be great.
And then I think you have uh, Andrew's last name listed under the thirty-nine Summer Ave. I was reading it and the email request should be Patrick.
Hmm.
Patrick was the name.
I guess does someone want to make a motion as amended?
Uh, make a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Alright, great. Your organization, I guess it's also on the agenda?
Yes, so I'm typically, was it July, every year, we do like the real.
Yeah.
You want to stay chair, you want to switch it up.
Happy to rotate it after two years, so, yeah.
Has it been two years that you've been good?
Yeah.
Man, yeah, we do typically like to rotate that.
What, change up the seats?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly. And I think the, the candidates in terms of longevity for um, for it would be either Patrick or Chris. Patrick's not here. And he, and he often isn't here. I mean, to, to, just to point that out because he has the um, hockey games. So um, I'm not sure if it would make sense for us to make him chair even if he were here to.
He's been vice, he's been vice.
He's been vice chair, yes.
One thing I did want to mention, I don't know if you guys can or are open to possibly like twenty twenty-six going forward, move to possibly Mondays, if you guys do Mondays. It's up to you guys, just a thought. Um, I don't know if that makes it easier or not for you guys.
Yeah. Monday.
It feels like it.
Monday used to be a standing conflict for me, but it's not anymore. So um, that would be okay with me.
Mondays.
I'd probably have to look at schedules and such.
That's, but we can come back to it next, next meeting. Um, if it doesn't really work in that side, I just thought.
We're still scheduled for the first Tuesday in October, though, right?
Yes, yes. Um, I won't move any of twen- the rest of twenty twenty-five, just make it like it's too complicated.
Back into January, you said?
Yes, like January, or we could choose like a further date, whatever you guys, whatever works for everybody.
Do you make motions?
We're eligible to feature.
Right.
I think it creates a greater headache for Laura.
Yeah, that's true. Um, I mean, Chris, are you, are you interested or?
Sure.
How about holidays that fall on Mondays? Does that affect?
So typically, I would either bump that like a week before, a week after, depending, or bump it to a Tuesday, because I'm also trying to avoid the conflict with select board as well and getting like bumped for meetings.
This is a more comfortable room.
Yes, it is.
Usually if it's, it's the first Monday, so if the first Monday is a holiday like it was yesterday, I'm assuming that it would be the following Monday.
Yeah, so what I would do is the next time, if you guys decide what you want to do, I'll draft the schedule. Um, I haven't started that just yet because I wanted to talk to you guys, but I'll draft like the actual first set of dates. And you guys can all look at them and see if it works. Um, I thought we can give it to like the same like Tuesdays. Might have to like, I'm gonna like work more with um, selected schedule, but it's usually the only month we have to contend with.
Not first Monday.
On the first Monday, you say?
Yeah, the first Monday is only the day.
Yeah, the others tend to be in the middle of the month.
Those are people who cover evenings.
Yeah, I'll see you visit that next time, you know, I'll put it on his calendar.
Yeah. So, I would, I would accept.
Chair, okay.
You both.
I, I, I move to uh, um, appoint Chris Crider as chairman.
Second.
All in favor? Alright, great. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
And then Patrick remaining as vice or?
Do you want to keep Patrick as remaining as vice chair?
I don't think.
Yeah, let's do it.
Unless Frank wants to.
Emotional job.
Take a turn.
Okay, move to a chair.
Second.
Sounds good.
I.
Thank you all.